Good evening and welcome to the October 14th, 2025, meeting of the Gloucester City Council. This meeting of the city council is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications and public hearings to be recognized to speak, and please silence your phones. If technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the city council and a quorum is present, the meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minute shall note the interruption. It is the finding of the city of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. Tonight, we have councillor at large Valerie Gilman. We have Ward one councillor Scott Memmard. And we have councillor at large Jeff Worthley. We have Ward three councillor Marjorie Grace, councillor at large Jason Grow. And I am Tony Gross, councillor at large, city council president. We have our city clerk Grace Poirier. And none of these were online. Oh, and we have Catherine Schlichty here, our C A O. And we have Connor McCorkle, our CFO is remote. And Kenny Costa, our city auditor is also remote. Now councillor Worthley, if you could lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
We will now have a moment of silence for Ken Parker, who recently passed away, and Jonathan Pope will be giving us his testimony. You want to step forward, Jonathan? Now, let's say, be seated. Ken is a world-renowned guitar builder and designer, and Jonathan will tell us more of Ken's illustrious history.
I hope so. I've been asked to say a few words about Ken Parker, although an internationally renowned guitar maker is relatively unknown here in Gloucester. I first met Ken Parker in 2009, when he rented a shop in the same building I had my cabinet shop. Not being a guitarist or an instrument maker, I had no idea that Ken Parker was famous. Our friendship followed the normal path of neighbors with common interests, boats, old cars, and of course woodworking. Ken was friendly and engaging. What struck me early on was his curiosity. Ken was truly interested in what you were doing and always willing to lend a hand, whether it was physically helping lifting or carrying or lending a tool that would make your task easier or something, just or just doing it for you, you know? I was in the process of rebuilding an old 20-inch bandsaw, and Ken would drop in to check on my progress. I got to remounting the top wheel, and what I discovered was what I thought was a bad bearing turned out to be an excessive wear in the wheel, which was in my mind the end of the bandsaw. On Ken's next visit, I explained the problem to him and stated my inability to solve it. He said, let me see what I can do. And he took the wheel, which he returned in a couple of weeks in perfect condition, as well as creating tools to make a task easier. Excuse me. Ken loved the challenge of figuring out how to fix machines, as well as creating a tool to make the task easier. He once said to me, the next time somebody calls me a genius, I hope it is for toolmaking. At the time, I still did not realize he was considered a genius in the luthier world. Ken loved tools, and we spent many hours in his shop or my shop discussing the attributes of different hand planes, scrapers, or bandsaws. When Ken came to dinner or party, you could count on him to bring something for show and tell, an old tool that its purpose was unknown, a new tool that he'd just made to hollow out the inside of an archtops bridge, or a historical artifact that would beat the conversation for the evening. I began to understand Ken's stature in the guitar-making world when he invited Susan and I to New York to attend a gala in honor of him at the Metropolitan Museum of Art, to the inclusion of two of his guitars into the permanent collection. The event was the most glamorous party I've ever been to in my life. Culminating in a concert with music composed for his guitars and an after-party attended by many famous guitars. There are many people more qualified than I to discuss the impact that Ken had on the construction of guitars, and you can see them all by just typing in Ken Parker into the Google. But what I will remember is his love for Gloucester and being on the water, his love of the arts community, and promoting local talent like Steve Lacy and Chelsea Berry, his humility, and his insatiable curiosity. Thank you.
And now let's have that moment of silence, please. Thank you very much, Jonathan, for sharing that. Also, Ethan Forman, our fifth estate representative, is here this evening. If you guys want to share any stories with him, the gentleman in the blue sweatshirt. All right, next order, business, madam clerk.
Oral communications.
Anyone in the audience who would like to speak during oral communications? Step up to the microphone, phone, state your name and address for the record.
Leah Grace Kaler, 116 East Main Street. Members of the council, thank you for hearing from us this evening. My name is Leah Grace Kaler, and this is my neighbor Denise Sheridan. And we're here this evening representing the eight homeowners at 116 East Main. Our purpose this evening is to deliver an impassioned plea to the mayor and to you on the council to move forward with installing two no parking signs, one for each end of our property that were requested of the D P W a few months ago and that were requested of the mayor by email a week ago. In the absence of no reply as of yet, we wanted to come here personally and make our request and hope that it will be heard. Our property is at a pinch point on East Main Street. It's on a curve. It's just before the Ridgedales. It's right near the cold storage unit, cold storage plant, and there's a lot of tractor-trailer traffic and trucks and cars that go by. It's a heavily trafficked area. So our issue is one of safety and visibility. When tractor-trailers and trucks and cars are parked in front of our property, we can't see very well to get in and out of our driveway. And it's hard to believe, and we have some photos to show you what it looks like, but when you've got the nose of a tractor trailer in the middle of your driveway, or the front of a car or a truck jutting into your driveway, it's even harder to get out. And some people just simply pull over, park in the driveway, turn off their cars, and send a text. So without the signs, we have no standing, and our only recourse is to go up personally and ask nicely for the person to move their cars. And I don't need to tell you, that has its own dangers. So we're asking for the prompt installation of these signs, which we understand to be consistent with Gloucester's no parking ordinance for East Main already in place in the area in front of our property. I'd like to address also the elephant in the room. We understand and appreciate that some members of this council may not have been happy with the developer of 116 East Main. Believe me, we understand. But we're not him. We are committed-
Thirty seconds.
I'm sorry?
Thirty seconds to go.
Okay. We're committed members of the Gloucester community. We support Gloucester institutions, eat in the restaurants, shop in the stores. I've been a member of the Gloucester Gig Growers for years. We pay taxes and we vote, and we're vital members of a vibrant community. We want our property to be beautiful and reflect well on the city. So we're asking that you hear our request and let us count on you to install signs promptly. Thank you, members of the council, for hearing us out.
Thank you. I didn't read our preamble to oral communications, and I'm sorry that I didn't let you know what the rules were. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council. Make their statement without debate, and the city council will refer matters to the office of the mayor. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. Sorry I didn't forewarn you of that. Did it perfectly, though. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? Do you have a document that you want to give us? You can submit that with the city clerk. The C A O is actually sitting right behind you a few. Catherine Schlichty. Okay, great. Thank you. Mary Ann Boucher, you would like to speak during oral communications?
Thank you, Tony. Mary Ann Albert Boucher, 93 Mall Pleasant Avenue. Last Wednesday, I attended the school committee meeting. Earlier in the day, I picked my granddaughter up at the intersection of Eastern Avenue and Webster Street. My daughter, a schoolteacher, as you know, walked her down and crossed her over from Webster to Eastern Avenue side for me to pick her up. And at that same time, I was talking with Mayor Verga, who had called me about a different topic, and I witnessed some very terrifying moments when the children were crossing the street by themselves before my daughter got there with my granddaughter. The cars are flying from the extension through Eastern Avenue, through Webster Street. There's no crossing guards. It's vital that we put somebody there. I went to the school committee meeting. I spoke at the meeting. Mayor Verga had already called Superintendent Lummis and discussed it with him. The school committee did respond, but I'm bringing this to the city council's attention because, Scott, you are the Ward one councillor. I also think it involves the Ward two councillor. It actually involves everybody. Our children are most important, and I would hope that each and every one of you would take a ride over there during morning drop-off, during afternoon pickup, and see to it that maybe we present a better hourly rate to potential crossing guards, because we need it before somebody is injured. It was terrifying, and I didn't want to speak at the school committee meeting last week, and I didn't want to speak tonight, but I feel that I have to before somebody is injured. Joanne Rocha was a crossing guard there for 50 years, and boy, I wish that woman was still around, because we need her more than ever. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Anyone else in the audience? No one online. Next order, business, madam clerk.
Presentations, commendations. Presentation from Erin George, Division Director of Program Services at Action Inc.
Hi, I'm hoping everyone can hear me okay.
No, I think you're going to need to pull the microphone a little bit closer, Erin.
All right, can you guys hear me better now?
Perfect.
Okay. Hi, my name is Erin George. I am the Division Director of Program Services over at Action Inc. On my way over here, it dawned on me that everyone was going to be wearing some really sweet t-shirts, and I myself totally forgot this morning, but I am here as a representative of Action in spirit, wearing my t-shirt, so I apologize. They do look very great on you, and thank you so much for inviting us to present on Action Services. So to get us started, Action Inc. was founded, woo, too quickly, back in 1965. We are one of more than 1,000 community action agencies that were started as part of the War on Poverty. We just recently had our 60th anniversary, sorry, yeah, 60th anniversary. So it's been incredibly exciting times. So some folks might be familiar. We're literally, depending on which window you look out, you might be able to see our office. The front door is now at 180 Main Street here in Gloucester, and we also have our emergency shelter located here in Gloucester, which is a little bit further down at 370 Main Street. So the mission of Action Inc. is to advance economic equality and foster a thriving community on Cape Ann and beyond. Our vision is to be an instrument of change, work collaboratively with partners to strengthen the community, and help people in our service area access the resources they need to achieve their goals. So Action's catchment area is the five communities of Gloucester, Essex, Ipswich, Manchester by the Sea, and Rockport. But for some of our additional programs, it does span the entirety of Essex County that I'll get into, but obviously the focus tonight here is on Gloucester. So we offer a variety of different programming. In the first, which I assume is very well-known to all of you thanks to your continued years of support, is Action's Community Services Department. So at our main office over at 180 Main Street, we have a team of community service navigators that meet with folks in our community that are in need of some type of assistance, so they can offer help with housing applications, applying for benefits, referral to legal assistance, helping with evictions, any sort of landlord issues that they might be having. We also offer support around immigration services. We have a multilingual navigator. She, in addition to English, she speaks Portuguese and Spanish, which we find extremely helpful. And we've seen an increase in the need for her services, which has grown to include working with the school department on actually registering students for school, in addition to helping with recertifying paperwork that they might need and things like that. And one of, I think, our best, most well-known programs is our rental and mortgage assistance. So the city of Gloucester, specifically through the CPC, and we've also been lucky enough to get money from the Affordable Housing Trust, has supported Action Inc.'s tenant-based rental assistance program for many years. So through that program, Action Inc. makes direct payment to a landlord in the community on behalf of a client who may have struggled with some sort of incident, leaving them unable to pay either their rent or mortgage. With the prices of things increasing, we're continuing to see people that are just narrowly on that line. One small car repair can really throw someone off, and the services that they think they're going to swing that month don't end up being the case. So we've been able to provide a safety net for a lot of members in our community and thank the city council and the city at large for the support that they've continued to have for the program over the years. In addition to our community services is our education and training programs. So that is also out of our location at 180 Main Street. So we offer adult basic education, so anyone over the age of 18. The G E D. is now called the High Set. So we offer that program in addition to English for speakers of other languages. All of those courses are done in the evening, and there's also the ability, instead of coming in person, of coming remotely via Zoom. We have lots of Zoom boards to make it interactive for folks. We also have our job training and career services, so we can help people with skills like resume writing, applying for jobs. The program manager has a rich network through her relationships with the Chamber and others, where she can actually provide direct referrals. When employers have job openings, they'll actually let her know, and she can look at what candidates she's been working with to see. We also do offer job training programs. So through the state of Massachusetts, we're lucky enough now to have free community college, so we can assist people in applying for free community college, but also work with them on completing job training opportunities. So if someone is interested in getting their commercial driver's license, their C D L, there's programming that we can tap into to be able to send people to some of those programs. Our Compass Youth Program is for youth ages 16 to 24, who maybe mainstream high school is not the best option for them. They can come into our office and work one-on-one with one of our teachers to be able to learn the necessary skills to pass their High Set. We also offer other services to the youth along with getting their High Set to be able to really support them with what's going on. And lastly, the Financial Empowerment Program. So it's relatively new. It's come about in the past couple of years. We offer individual financial empowerment coaching in addition to Money Matters classes. So Money Matters is a pretty well-known curriculum where the basics of setting up a checking account, banking, creating a budget, all of those are explored in detail. So that class is offered in the evenings, again, in person, or we offer a Zoom option for people to get a better sense of what is going on with the comings and goings of their money, and especially for folks who might have a very limited income or a tight budget. We've heard how helpful it can be to really put pen to paper and figure out where money is going and to come up with a plan and goals to work towards. And we do offer individual financial empowerment coaching as well if someone isn't as comfortable with the group setting. The Home Energy Assistance Program, which I think everyone probably knows as Fuel Assistance, provides direct heating benefits to residents in the community, whether that be someone that needs help with oil or someone who gets direct payment because their heat is included in their rent. The program is able to provide those services. So again, that used to be actually over on Washington Street, but they are now located out of our main office at 180 Main Street, so we are all together there. So the Fuel Assistance season does not officially begin until November 1st, but that does not mean that the fuel team is not working very hard at this moment, processing all the new applications that are coming in for first-time applicants as well as for renewal applicants. So if you haven't gotten an application and are expecting one, please call us, because they'll send you one out. You can also apply online. If you have already applied by mail and sent it in, please don't apply online, just pick one, because that's adding to some of the fun that we're having. But it's a vital service. Again, this is a program not only offered in Gloucester, but across the state and country, and has been around for a long time, and is extremely helpful to folks that we have. And we'll parlay into some of the energy services that we also offer. Also, Gloucester has the aggregate rate that people can get for National Grid, so we actually have someone once a month that comes from National Grid and will help residents ensure that they are on the rate to be able to get that discount. And National Grid is now starting a tiered system. They're one of the first utility providers to provide it. So there used to be just one discount rate that you would get if you were low-income. They've now kind of broken it out, so there's different tiers depending on where you fall on your income, you actually get a deeper discount on your utility bill. So that's something that we're working to try and get word out about, because that is available. Even if you're over income for Fuel Assistance, you might still be eligible for utility benefits, so we're trying to circulate that word as well, and especially the rate through Gloucester. And then our housing services, which I think people are very familiar with. We own affordable housing here in Gloucester. We have a host of properties that we work with Gloucester Housing Authority and also Community Teams Works for the subsidies that we have. We also have our emergency shelter, as I mentioned, is down at 370 Main Street here in town. It's for adult individuals 18 and over. And our permanent supportive housing, folks might be familiar with our Housing First Program. We recently had an expansion of 30% last year, so the Housing First Program is for chronically homeless individuals and families. To be considered chronically homeless, you first have to have essentially one year of homelessness under your belt, and you also have to have a diagnosed disability. So in thinking of the population of services for those folks, they're some of the most vulnerable in our community. And we have a program that spans the North Shore, including- here in Gloucester as well. So there's that. And then, as I mentioned, our Energy Services Program. So Action's Energy Program works closely with our Fuel Assistance Department. So if you are a renter, homeowner, landlord, that is having issues with your heating system or things like that, they can actually come into your home and do an energy assessment. You can be qualified to get upgrades to your heating system. They do weatherizations for single-family homes. So we've actually found it incredibly beneficial, not only for individuals that own their home, but also for landlords, particularly ones that we work with. If they have individuals that are income-qualified in the units that they're renting, they can actually become eligible to receive all of these services, and it's all actually done for free. So they are based out of Peabody, just because of the territory they cover is much larger than our catchment area. So they're able to work with folks, just support them with any needs that they might have related to system upgrades and making sure that their weatherized windows, all that sort of thing. And also energy-efficient appliances like refrigerators and air conditionings is part of what they screen for, too. They actually work with housing authorities, so they've done significant projects with like the Melton Housing Authority of replacing like thousands of windows and other things. So small or large property owners, landlords, and renters can reach out depending on the services. It's all about income eligibility. And that is essentially the very quick and dirty overview of Action Inc. with our services. I know until I worked at Action, I didn't realize the breadth of work that the agency actually does. We've been here for 60 years and want to be around a lot longer, so thank you all for the support that you've continued to show us. I don't know if anyone has any questions or anything, or yeah.
Councillor Gilman.
Thank you, Erin. That was excellent. So is there fear at all about some of the budget cuts that might be coming down? And if so, how are you preparing for how that might affect all of the people that take advantage of Action?
Yeah, so Action receives a variety of funding, including state, federal, and private dollars. So at this point, we're just doing a lot of planning along what the impact will be of the continued shutdown. We're kind of playing through exactly what that is. We had some messaging come out that most of our programs are operating business as usual at this point, with the exception of one of our energy programs, that part of it is federally funded, and that they're only doing emergencies at this point. But by and large, at this time, all of our programs are running as they typically do. And we're still continuing to evaluate and do some contingency planning based on how long this shutdown may occur for. So but as things change, we've been doing a lot of messaging. We have an update on our website with anything, so we've been trying to push out to people. If and when there is a change, we will continue to do the same, so.
And can you just briefly describe how you keep in touch with the folks from the Grace Center, from the Gloucester Community Development Board of Health, Council on Aging?
Yeah.
How you're able to know what their issues are and how you can help them?
Yeah, I will say, the one thing about Gloucester is we are a very well-connected community, like it or not. So I think it makes it really easy for us to stay in touch. So back during the COVID pandemic, the Action Emergency Shelter actually co-located with the Grace Center during the Y M C A, which at this point, I can't believe, was almost six years ago, but we had a strong relationship before and continue to do so. I personally go down to the Grace Center once a week and check in with them. We have strong relationships. Elise from the Rose Baker Senior Center is on Action's board. I am thankful enough and lucky enough to serve on our own Board of Health here in Gloucester with Dominique, who has been a tremendous ally in a lot of the work that we're doing. And I think within the Community Impact Unit, there's a lot of work happening with the Rise- Um, and I think within the Community Impact Unit, there's a lot of work happening with the RISE grant that the Health Department is getting. And I know they're doing a lot of work to kind of build the infrastructure of agencies collaborating more. So before I was coming here, we're doing some work. We were, got some of the funds for transportation, so the Grace Center, One Stop Core, all of those folks are in the pot together. So we frequently are in collaboration and keep in touch. Um, so I think Gloucester is a unique community in a lot of ways, but I think what makes us special is those connections that we have. And no one here is shy to ask for things usually, so we're usually pretty quick to pick up a phone or give someone a call, so.
Thank you.
Counsel Gro.
Thank you for the presentation, Erin. I have two quick questions. One, the first one is roughly how many people take advantage of the um, the, the Heating and Fuel Assistance Program every year? And the second question is, if you are someone who thinks they might be eligible for services or knows someone or family relative who might be eligible for services. How do they get in touch with you and how do they get it through the process of un- of understanding and applying for what they are eligible for?
Yeah, so to answer your first question, it was over three thousand households that we assisted last year through the Fuel Assistance Program. And in terms of your second question, um if you are not, if you want to give us a call at nine seven eight two eight two one thousand. We would be happy to answer any of your questions online at actioninc.org. Um, basically however works for you to reach out to us. If you, your neighbor, whoever thinks there's a service that you might benefit from, please give us a call and ask. Also, if there's services or something that you need that you're not sure about, please call us and we can work with our community partners. Val, like you alluded to, we have a strong network here of partners and we rely on each other for the back and forth of how, when one per, agency steps in with one service. Can another come to the table with something else? And I think that's really important. Um, some of our programs have different income limits depending on what it is. So don't automatically assume because you were not eligible for one program that you won't be eligible for another. Um, and just please reach out and reach out sooner rather than later. We have the ability to do more when we have more lead time to fix a si- situation happening than waiting until you already have had to go to court for an eviction or something like that. The sooner you call us when things seem to be drifting in the wrong direction, the more we can offer in terms of services to get you back on track quicker, so, yeah.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Um, I, there's a role for all the nonprofits that work in Gloucester. I know you work collaboratively with, with them. But I don't think there's one organization that does more with less than Action does to help more people in Gloucester and people who need it the most. I could say firsthand, Action's been there for my family, for other families that I've stared towards you. And I just want to ask you if there's, for people who might be on that edge of qualifying or needing help and maybe being afraid to ask. People are not taking away from somebody else if they do ask for help, is that correct?
That is very correct, and I think it's a good point to raise. We see with a lot of, not to stereotype anyone, but seniors in our community don't want to apply for Fuel Assistance because then someone else won't get it. Don't be afraid of that. If you are qualified, we will make sure that there's services for folks, but you're not taking away from someone else by asking. And oftentimes, asking earlier prevents more need in the long run. So you're kind of preempting yourself maybe getting into a worse situation. Um, so you're not taking away from anyone else. And there are also services that the city like Gloucester provides funding for, the state, the federal government, private donors to be able to support people when they need it. So it's critically important that people recognize that and I think are comfortable. We do our best, we can meet with people by phone or over email if they're, they're nervous to come in in person. It can be challenging while us being on Main Street is convenient. You never know who you're going to bump into, but we want to be as low barrier as possible for people to come to be able to see us, so.
Just as a follow-up, if I may, your services are confidential. If someone does need your help, they're not being broadcasted to the world that they need that help. And I think that's an important distinction for anybody that needs that help.
Yep, our services are completely confidential. All information is kept under lock and key and it's something that we take very seriously. Given Gloucester is a small community, we understand the importance of it. And also just people are putting their trust in us, so we want to make sure that when we earn it, that we maintain that trust.
Thank you again.
Also, um, I just make a comment that you mentioned the war on poverty. The war on poverty in twenty twenty-five is a whole different meaning than it did in the seventies or sixties. I think it was the sixties, actually, maybe under Johnson. Um, it's, today it's an assault, so.
Yeah, and I think Gloucester, I, I count us lucky in a lot of ways because we have such a robust service network within our community. But even we will be stretched then like Action, the Open Door, the Grace Center, Wellspring, Pathways. We are so lucky in so many ways to have the infrastructure and agencies in this community that we have. But even still is not meeting the need, so I can only fathom other communities that are not as lucky to have a city that supports their rental assistance and understands that value and the position that they're in. Um, so we're lucky that Gloucester is a leader in a lot of ways.
Thank you. I would like to, uh, well, we can have an applause and then I'd like to take a short recess so we can have a photo op and uh.
Um, and again, my name's Erin George, I work over at Action. If you need anything, just give us a call and we'll try and figure it out.
You're going to be in the photo too.
Oh.
Without, without a T-shirt. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Confirmation of new appointments.
Counsel Majota.
Sorry. Yeah, right. Clean Energy Commission, um Emma Strubel, do you want to come up here and uh just tell us something about yourself?
Can you hear me all right? Okay. Hi, um, I'm Emma Strubel. Um, I uh, yeah, I'm happy to have been brought to Gloucester by my partner, Pat Verga, who's uh, you know, was born, well. Born close to here, raised here. Um, really happy to be welcomed to the community here. Um, I would love to, I'm excited to have the opportunity to serve on the Clean Energy Commission. Um, I'm currently working as a professor in my area. One of my areas of expertise is um, well, AI and AI energy policy. Um, and I've been working in that space with the US federal government, German government, um UK. Um, but I'd love to, you know, local policy development implementation is also extremely important. Um, so I'd love to have the opportunity to contribute to Gloucester in that way as a member of the Clean Energy Commission. I don't know if I'm supposed, I'm supposed to say.
No, that's perfect, no, thank you. Any consuls with any questions? Counsel Gro.
Yeah, first off, welcome and thank you for stepping up. Just completely ignore Tonya. Um, I, I'm very interested. Be, one of the things that, that uh we get asked a lot is what are we going to do about global climate change and, and global uh ocean rising seas? And I always feel a little like stumped by that because we're just a little tiny dot on the end of a tiny piece of land in the middle of nowhere. How do we fix this? So what kind of things, coming from your area of expertise, do you see as being things that we can kind of look at realistically? In terms of policy or things that we might think about doing locally that may have some impact down the road?
Yeah, so I mean, I think a good example is like changes in local building codes. Um, that's something we definitely have control over and that can sort of shift the landscape in terms of, you know, emissions that are happening. From individual buildings or also larger like industrial spaces, um for example. Um, as well as helping to, you know, adapt to the inevitable changes that are going to happen, which is definitely something that I think we're all quite familiar with here. Like increases in flooding, for example, due to um more extreme weather events. Like what do we do locally, um, you know, to protect the citizens from those risks? Um, yeah, sorry, I'll, I tend to, I can go on, but that's an example.
Counsel Gilman.
So if you look on the Community Development website, which I'm sure you have, and check out things like the Municipal Vulnerability Survey. Um, that is so rich in history of how we've worked together. So um, that's kind of like the springboard of where we are today. And we all prioritize it, there were sixty-five people here working on that plan. And um, so have you had an opportunity to look at that and what were your initial thoughts?
Yeah, I have started looking at it. Um, I guess I want to say that I'm not planning to jump in in this role and start like, I don't know, trying to change things or dictate anything. I think the, the role that I'm taking right now is I want to listen and learn. You know, I've already been sitting in on some of the CEC meetings and there's, yeah, there's so much knowledge and work that's already being done. And I feel like I have a lot to learn before I'm ready to start. It's ridic, you know, not that I ever want to dictate anything, but even proposing, you know, sort of concrete plans on what should be done. So I think I don't have a clear idea of what I want to do yet, but I think that's good.
Great, I'm, I'm just, there's just so many tools out there and we're pretty rich in history and knowledge. And the more you can just, as you said, learn about it, it's great. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Really glad that you're stepping up, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel Majota.
Committee recommendation on a motion by myself, seconded by Counsel Grace. The Ordinance and Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the City Council appoint Emma M. Strubel to the Clean Energy Commission, term ending two fifteen twenty-seven in ISO mode.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Majota, seconded by Counselor Grace. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Eyes have it, seven to zero, two absent.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. You're, uh, you've gotten, um, happy you've gotten sworn in and did you do your ethics? It is coming to an address near you. Uh, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda.
Would any counselor like to remove anything off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Gro, seconded by Counselor Gilman. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, eyes have it, seven to zero, two absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The October ninth Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report.
Counsel Memard.
I would move to have us adopt the Budget and Finance Committee Report as a consent agenda. And then I will go through the items in summary and if there's any questions, people can pull those off.
Motion made by Counselor um Memard, seconded by Counselor Gro. Counsel Memard.
First item on our Budget and Finance Committee from last week, October ninth, was a memorandum from the Veterans Services Director requesting our acceptance of a one hundred dollar donation from Ed Camo for the Veterans Services. The Archives Committee requested our acceptance of a one hundred dollar donation from Bruce Toby for the Archives Committee. The Director of Elder Services, Elise Sinagra, uh requested our acceptance of a total of one thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars of donations from uh the West Gloucester Trinitarian Church, Judith McCulloch, Barbara Black, Michelle Shimitaro, Marilyn Grant, Paige Perisi, Margaret Bao, Victoria Merrill, Ed Fisher and Jane Jackson, for a total of one hundred, one thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars to the Senior Center, Council on Aging. The Police Chief requested our acceptance of a donation from the Open Door in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Open Door. The Police Chief also requested our acceptance of a State nine-one-one training grant for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six period in the amount of ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-six cents. That's ninety-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-six cents. The DPW Financial Manager requested our acceptance of, or our payment, excuse me, of a fiscal year twenty twenty-five invoice with fiscal year twenty twenty-six funds in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. And. And the Chief Financial Officer requested our acceptance of, our payment of fiscal year twenty twenty-six, twenty-four, excuse me, fiscal year twenty twenty-four invoices with fiscal year twenty twenty-six funds in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-four cents. This is something that had been misplaced with the John Dunn and Connor McCorkle transition. Nice to think of John Dunn, this is just passed his birthday. And item number eight was a memorandum from the Chief, Chief Financial Officer, uh twenty twenty-six essay number one in the amount of seventy-eight thousand dollars, essay. Uh, twenty twenty-six essay one in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand dollars, s, two, that was. Essay three in the amount of thirty-two thousand two hundred and ten dollars, essay four in the amount of fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. And essay numbers five, these are supplemental appropriations, in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for the Department of Public Works. Within the department, those are all changes over, uh, of funding support. And then finally, the City Auditor requested our acceptance of a MEMA FEMA response to COVID-nineteen Public Health Emergency Grant. A reimbursement in the amount of twenty-six thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. And that concludes Budget and Finance Presentation. No questions?
I mo- I moved to approve the unanimous consent agenda as stated.
It was moved and seconded already.
Oh, it was?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
So do we have to do the roll call?
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Gro.
Yes.
Counselor Gro.
Yes.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Counselor Memard.
Aye.
The vote is seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent, the motion passes.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
There are no um items under the heading for a Standing Committee Report for the October sixth Ordinance as an Administration Meeting. There was no planning and development, Standing Committee Meeting on October eighth. We have no public hearings, so next up is for council vote, the warrant for the November fourth, twenty twenty-five municipal election.
To adopt?
Motion made by Counselor Gilman, seconded by Counselor Memard. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed, eyes have it. Um, seven in favor, two absent. Next we have um the proclamation of then our sponsor, we've read it already. So we just need to move to um commemorate September fifteenth, October fifteenth, it's Hispanic, it's Heritage Month, nice and moved.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Gro, seconded by Counselor Majota. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed, the eyes have it, seven to, um, seven to zero with two absent. Next, we have um a decision to adopt. Would you like to read that, Counselor Gro, since it's a uh PND?
Sure, um, motion is to adopt the decision for the Special Counsel Permit, uh, two thousand twenty-five dash zero zero seven Dale Avenue, number twenty-three, map fourteen, lot twenty-five. To convert a mixed-use building to a four-family residential use with a separate office building in the R-five district. Would you like to read the whole thing? The decision is adopted? Okay, that's the motion, that's fine, nice and moved.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Gro, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Roll call, sorry.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Gro.
Yes.
Counselor Gro.
Yes.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Counselor Memard.
Aye.
The vote is seven in favor, zero opposed, two absent, the motion passes.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Counselor's request to the Mayor.
Counselor Worthley.
I've submitted my request to the Mayor already and I don't have any new ones for tonight, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Uh, Counsel Gilman.
Just want to remind everyone that the Mayor's Halloween Party is this Saturday from noon to three. Hope to see you there, dressed in costume.
Stage four park.
Stage four park, thank you.
Counselor Grace.
Yeah, um, just to, um, a thought came to me when Marion Boucher was talking about crossing guards. I don't know um what the hiring process is for that, whether people have to make a commitment to every shift, um, you know, Monday through Friday. But one way to possibly get more people to be interested in it would be to explore doing per diem where people can sign up for shifts that are available. Because you'll have a lot more luck getting people to take one or two shifts than to take tender in the week.
Uh, Counsel Gro.
I'm good.
Counsel Majota.
I submitted my request to the Mayor this evening, thank you.
Counsel Memard.
And I have also submitted my requests from constituents to the Mayor's Office and the city staff. And thank you, thank you for their engagement on those other issues.
Hey, thank you all, um. Anybody want to make it?
Motion.
Fight over.
I've got four more meetings.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn by Counselor Majota, seconded by Counselor Gro. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Eyes have it, seven to zero, two absent.